Good evening, good evening and welcome. Welcome to the Old Lake Highlands Neighborhood Association General Membership Spring 2014 Meeting. Thank you very much for your attendance and welcome. First of all, I want to thank our host for the evening, the Lake Highlands Baptist Church, right here. Let's have a round of applause for them. Mark Farish is the Senior Pastor and of this church and does a lot of fine work in our community, including donating the land and the water for our neighborhood garden Got a good friend Trey Groves up there, he's the Worship Pastor and he's running our sound this evening. Thank you Trey. And to round out the staff, we have Mary Ann Farish and Kim Kelly, who are two of the finest staffers you'd ever want on your team. So, really thank the church here for hosting this event. I'm reminded of a story that I heard back in college in a public relations class, it was about a CEO from an airline. And his PR guy came into his office and said, "Hey, I've got 10,000 pencils, it's got our logo on there and then also has comfortable, dependable, and safety." And the CEO took one look at him and said, "You gotta burn them all, you gotta get rid of them, we don't want them." And the PR guy was like, "Well, people use pencils." And he says, "I don't want the public to ever have an opportunity to think that we don't think of safety first." And that's kinda the way I feel tonight. As my role here, as my position, I always consider safety first, because if we don't have safety, then a lot of this stuff's not gonna happen anyway. So, that's our, uh, that's our goal here as the, as the Lake Highlands Board, we have that. It's a great time to be alive on this planet, we got everything we need, we live in a country of security and safety. We live in a state that probably best represents the opportunities and freedoms that we have in this country, and we live in a city inside of the state that has wealth and prosperity and abundance. A lot of other places in the country undergoing tough economic times, we seem to be blessed here. And actually, here in Old Lake Highlands, I feel like we've got one of the best neighborhoods in the city, so... I feel like we're truly blessed beyond belief with that. So, I'd like to talk about the meeting this evening. We are asking for decorum, and we're asking for the golden rule. We want people to treat others as you would be wanting to be treated yourself. What we're gonna do, the Board decided it'd be good to give the presenters of the proposal for the Boy Scout Hill Restaurant, who are gonna be presenting to us tonight, 20 minutes to give their presentation. After they give their presentation, we will have people come up to the microphones, one here, queue up here at each microphone, and ask a question. The format for the questioning is what I'm calling the Quadruple One. We're gonna have one person could be, give a talk for one question, for one minute, with one follow-up short question allowed. So, it's 1-1-1. Basically, it's one person has one minute to ask a question, and then we'll give the presenters time to respond. We're gonna have a speaker timer up here, because we want to be, how the questions to be succinct and to the point, and the comments as well. So, we'll have a speaker timer, our Vice President Barbara Arrendondo will be our speaker timer. She will flash a yellow card at 45 seconds, and then at the one-minute mark, she will flash the red card, which will mean it'll be time to wrap it up. The red card policy will also be in effect. If someone's disruptive, they will get one warning to stop. If they do it again, they will be asked to leave. So, we want the decorum to be nice, we want these gentlemen to be able to give their presentation as cleanly and uninterrupted as possible, and we want to be able to hear what they're having to say, because it's a very important issue that lies before us now in our neighborhood. And now, to introduce the presenters for the evening. Rick Cough is one of the founding partners at Munch, Hark, Cough, and Har. Rick's representation of the entrepreneurial real estate investors includes acquisition, development, construction, financing, leasing, and sales transactions of all types of properties. He has had extensive experience in the structuring of transactions, in the preparation, review, negotiation of contracts, management and operating agreements, partnership agreements, leases, and financing documentation. He's a graduate of Wake Forest University, and he lives in the, I meant to ask you where the neighborhood you live in?
I live in Lake Islands.
You live in Lake Islands. And you're on the board there as well, aren't you? You on the board, or on the board? Was it your neighborhood association?
Um, I'm actually the President of my Homeowners Association.
Okay, great.
But my Homeowners Association only has 11 homes, so... And I showed up at the meeting, and so...
Great, fantastic. And Lyle Bergen over here, on the stage right. Mr. Bergen is the Director of Development for Brock Partners.
Brooke.
Brooke, sorry about that.
That's okay.
Brooke Partners. He is a resident of Dallas and a very active in the community. He's on the Board of Directors of Downtown Dallas Incorporated, and has served on the Downtown Improvement District Board of Directors. He has served on the Board of Directors for the Dallas Zoological Society, and is currently on the Facilities Committee. He has also served on the Downtown Partnership Board of Directors, which was founded to stimulate redevelopment of Dallas's Main Street. Mr. Bergen is a graduate of the University of Texas with a Bachelor of Architect degree. Without further ado, I present Mr.'s Cough and Bergen. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate all of you being here, but this is kind of an overwhelming response. We knew that there would be a lot of people here tonight, we knew that this was an important issue to all of you, and we knew that it was an important issue to us. And so, as I look out there and I see all of you with, you know, the green lapels on, you know, and the black shirts, I kinda look out there and I think, you know, those are people that haven't heard our story, and I just ask that you keep an open mind, and that you listen to what we have to say, and you see our plans, because like all of you, we're lovers of the lake. You know, we're really just like you. You know, as he mentioned, I live in Lake Islands. I've lived there for 33 years. I'm a user of the lake. I'm a runner, I'm a biker, I'm a sailor, I fish there, I played softball there, I walk my dog there. I get down there, I use the lake, and I use the lake and I love the lake. And one of the things that's been important to me, as I've gotten into this process, is to realize how important the lake is to all of you. And so, you know, I just wanna, you know, thank you for, for being here, and for expressing your thoughts. And again, I just ask that, you know, that you keep an open mind with respect to what we're talking about, because the proposal that we're making is not something to take away any parkland, it's not something to take away the park, it's to provide an additional facility at the park that people that otherwise aren't utilizing it and go someplace else to, to achieve that goal, have an opportunity to go and use the lake and have the opportunity to enjoy it, like all of us do, but it's an additional way to do that. So, as he mentioned, you know, I'm a lawyer, but, you know, I'm a real estate lawyer. I'm not a litigator, and, you know, that's my day job, and it seems like my night job has turned into coming to meetings like this. And I think I like my day job better than my night job. But that's who I am, and that's why I'm here. This is my partner, Lyle Bergen. I'll let Lyle introduce himself.
Thanks Rick, and Trey, if you'd go ahead and go to the next slide. As Rick mentioned, I've lived in Dallas as well for 30-plus years now. I went to the University of Texas at Austin, graduated in 81 with a degree in architecture, and practiced architecture for 20 years. And fortunately, in my architecture career, I had the opportunity to be involved with a lot of neat projects that got done in downtown Dallas to help with the revitalization of downtown. In addition to that, through that time period, I got involved in some restaurant opportunities. I'm an owner and participant in a couple of different restaurants, you may be familiar with them. Urban Taco and Hook Line and Sinker on McKinney Avenue. Hook Line and Sinker's been there for 18 years now, and, uh, provides a great place for a lot of people to enjoy their food. So, I as well have been a biker, a sailor, a runner, a dog walker, all of those things around the lake, and going back to in the 80s, I thought, you know, what a, what a great thing it could be if there was a place on the lake somewhere where after I enjoyed a sail, or a jog, or a walk, that I could go, have a meal, enjoy the sunset, look out over the lake, see the downtown view. Trey, if you'd go on to the next slide, please? So, it's really our desire and mission to build a facility here that benefits all the citizens of Dallas, certainly one that we would like for all of you to come to. We wanted to feel like that place that you experienced when you were a child, a lodge, somewhere that you went and you had great meals, you had fun at the lake, you paddled or rode, or ran, or jogged, and after that, you had a place to go and celebrate that experience, to have a meal with your friends and family, to look out over the lake. We also want to be involved in creating sustainability at the lake, and we want to do that a couple of ways. We want to do that with the rent that we're gonna pay, that will be, that'll go to a trust fund for expenditure only for projects around White Rock Lake, and Rick's gonna talk about that a little bit more. But we also want to do, as I mentioned, with this structure, with this place, we want to create a place that's sustainable. We want it to be designed and built with sustainability in mind. And as we think about this, you know, there's not a place in Dallas that's like this, but there's a lot of other places all around the country that there are restaurants similar to this. If you go to the next slide, Trey, just a few. You've got the Boathouse in Central Park, a great place for people to go dine in a public park. You've got the Presidio Cafe in San Francisco, same thing, a wonderful restaurant in the park for people to go enjoy. Shiprock Grill at Red Rocks in Colorado, what an incredible view out over a natural park, where people can go enjoy a meal, have that great view, and really enjoy additionally the park. Same thing, Grand Canyon, Garden of the Gods, so, you know, incredible locations where there are restaurants in public parks. Millennium Park in Chicago, what a fantastic thing they did in Chicago to create that park and provide a place for many, many people to come and enjoy. Ralph's in New Orleans, County Line on, on Lake Austin, I bet we've all been there many times. And then, of course, Savor at Clyde Warren Park, a new restaurant on Clyde Warren Park, and Rick's gonna talk about that a little bit more, and the structure that it was set up in, and one that we would hope to follow as well. Of course, the Park Tavern at Piedmont Park in Atlanta. Next slide, and of course, I can go on and on, the Boathouse Restaurant in St. Louis, Discovery Green in Houston, Niagara Falls, New Orleans, Lincoln Park in Chicago. So, we think, and strongly believe, that it's that experience that Dallas is really missing, and we want to give this experience to the citizens of Dallas, create this place that we can all go enjoy and celebrate the lake. Rick?
Next slide, please. Okay. Question is, where are you gonna do this? I am sure that 99% of you out there know exactly where we're gonna do this, but I bet that there are people that don't have a really good idea as to where Boy Scout Hill is, and so, we're gonna educate you on where Boy Scout Hill is. You look up here, here's... I apologize for that comment. Boy Scout Hill is right up here on the north end of the lake, the northeast corner of the lake. Let's go to the next slide, please. At the intersection of Mockingbird and Buckner, this is your homeowner's neighborhood right over here, and that spot on the, on the top of the hill is the spot that we are proposing for our restaurant. And the, uh, next slide, please? That location is a spot that we think is the best location for a restaurant at the lake, and frankly, we think it is the only location...
Come on! We call that a job! Shut up and let him finish.
Thank you. We believe that that's, as I said, the best location, and really the only location. We've looked at other spots around the lake, you know, and where did this, you know, idea come from? My initial thought was that doing the restaurant where the old Dreyfus Club was located would be a great location. It's a spot that overlooks the lake, there used to be a building there, how could anybody complain about that? Well, it's a great location, but it's a terrible location. It's an accident waiting to happen. And it's an accident waiting to happen, because in order to get there, you have to drive by the Stone Tables, you have to come down that road that all of those, the bikers and the walkers are currently using. And so, while that was a great location, as I said, it's a terrible location. And so, we tried looking at other places to see where we could do it and avoid that kind of conflict with the other users of the lake. And this is a spot where we have the opportunity to do that, because up on top of that hill, you can access it off of Mockingbird, you can access it off of Buckner, you don't have to get down onto East Lothar Drive, you don't have to get onto that Curly Q Road that, you know, gets off there and goes down to East Lothar Drive, where you have the kayak place, and you have all of that use that's going on down there. The people that are gonna be coming to this restaurant will be able to drive up and be able to park, and not get down onto East Lothar Drive, and to create that conflict with what else is going on. You're gonna be able to have access to the restaurant from the hike and the bike trail. That hike and bike trail is used all the time, and so, we want to set it up in a way so that people can be able to ride by on their bikes and come up and access that facility and be able to utilize it, and we're gonna have restrooms there so that they'll be able to utilize the, the restrooms from the outside as well. And that's a great spot from just the amenity of what we're trying to provide to the city of Dallas, and to your Neighborhood Association, and to the other Neighborhood Associations around the lake. A place where you can sit there, you can look across the lake at the beauty of White Rock Lake, you can see downtown, and you can enjoy the beauty that is there and that is gonna be, to open up the eyes of people that otherwise don't have the opportunity to go by and to see that where it is. Next slide, please. The, uh, the structure that we're talking about with respect to this project, as Lyle mentioned, is a lease structure, where what we're proposing to do is we're proposing to build a building on Boy Scout Hill. That building will cost between five and seven million dollars. We're gonna build that building and give it to the city of Dallas. And so, when people say, "We're taking away a part of the park," we're not taking away a part of the park, we're building a building and giving it to the city of Dallas. In exchange for that, in exchange for that, we're gonna lease it back for a period of time, and we're gonna pay rent. We don't know exactly what the rent is, but estimations are that that rent's gonna be in the neighborhood of a quarter million dollars. And so, not only are we going to build a building, give it to the city of Dallas, but then we're gonna pay a quarter million dollars a year on an annual basis, plus incentive rent on top of that, depending on sales, that will be money that will go into a trust fund for the benefit of White Rock Lake. And this trust fund that we're talking about, the structure that we're mentioning, that we want to use, is really the same thing that has been done at Clyde Warren Park downtown. Clearly, this is a much different place than Clyde Warren Park, but that structure is a structure that really is something that works perfectly for them, and I think it works perfectly for this situation as well, because what we would do is we would create a nonprofit, and that nonprofit would be owned by the organizations that make up the lake. We would love for that organization to be, for that nonprofit to be owned by the White Rock Lake Conservancy, for the Love of the Lake, and the White Rock Lake Foundation, so that the money that is paid to that nonprofit in rent would flow just to those organizations, and they can use it for their various projects. We would sign the lease with the nonprofit, and so, that's where that rent would go. And so, essentially, what would be happening in connection with that is we would be providing a source of funding for the various projects around the lake that those organizations are currently trying to do. Right now, the city of Dallas spends about $450,000 a year on maintenance expenses for maintaining White Rock Lake. That's cutting the grass, that's the light, that's the maintenance of the buildings and facilities, and picking up trash, and all that kinda stuff. That $450,000, that money doesn't go very far. We're talking about a quarter million dollars a year in rent that can go on top of that, that will go into that, into that nonprofit that will be able to be utilized by those organizations. Right now, the Conservancy is in the process of trying to raise money to do the, to redo the Stone Tables project. They're trying to raise $750,000 in order to do that project. $750,000 is a lot of money. Where are they getting that money? They're going to the people that are members of the Conservancy, they're going to all of you, I'm sure, and asking you to make contributions to be able to pay for that. Well, this isn't gonna fill that hole entirely, but hopefully, it's gonna fill the hole, you know, by a good amount, that will provide a source of funding to be able to cause that sustainability of the, the lake and the park. I mean, we were talking to somebody today, and they made the comment about how they go to Winfrey Point, and the restrooms don't even work. Well, guess what? You know, here's some funds that can be utilized in order to do that. Next slide, please. Okay. You all know where Boy Scout Hill is. This is a site plan that shows where our facility is gonna be located on Boy Scout Hill. Right here is the existing exit road, or exit off of Mockingbird. Right here is that little pavilion building. Our site is located up the hillside from that, and this is the restaurant building, and then the parking is behind that, still a good ways from, from the intersection there. And so, where this, what this is, is the area that is taken up by the parking and the building and the, and the deck on the outside, is about two and a half acres. That total site is about 15 acres. And so, there is a portion of that site that we are clearly taking away, and there is some Blackland Prairie that is up on that hillside. And that's, you know, Blackland Prairie is an important part of, you know, North Texas. We realize that, and so, what we're gonna do is, when we take away two and a half acres of Blackland Prairie in order to put in the parking and the building up there, we're gonna restore Blackland Prairie in the other areas around there. You know, right by that pavilion building, for example, right by that pavilion building, for example, there is a lot of buffalo grass out there that doesn't have any, the Blackland Prairie. We're happy to restore that Blackland Prairie and to make it so that it's beautiful for everybody to enjoy. One other comment that people make is that, they say, "Well, how do we know that you're gonna do the things that you say that you're gonna do?" Well, as I mentioned earlier, we're gonna have a lease, and that lease is gonna be, it's a legal contract, and that lease will have a legal description on there, and it'll have a site description that will define what it is that we have to build, what we can do, and it can be very specific in terms of what's gonna happen on that particular site. In addition, that property will be rezoned, and there will be a PD that will be put in place, and that PD will include a very strong restriction as well. And so, the lease will be controlled by that nonprofit that will be owned by those organizations, and they'll be the ones that make sure that we do what it is that we say that we're supposed to do with respect to this project. Next slide? Okay. The detailed description of the plan. This is a, this is a plan that a lot of people have seen, and they've seen this one and said, "My God, look at how this is just so big, and it's taking over the whole area on the top of the hillside." Well, remember, it's a zoom-in, and it's just of the site that we're talking about.
And, and just to talk a little bit more about, about what we're proposing to do, as Rick mentioned, we are, we are able to access the restaurant off of Mockingbird here, and off of Buckner over here. And so, by doing so, we're able to keep all the vehicular traffic in that area, and we'll retain a consultant, a traffics, to do traffic studies for us and work with us to make sure the traffic plans are all worked out fine. We're, we're terracing the, this pointer's not, okay, there we go. We intend to terrace the parking lots into the hill, and grow the grasses up high all around them, very much like you see at the Audubon Society, so that the cars will be concealed from view from the roadways. And we also plan to keep a very low roof line on the north side of the building, so again, the seating area inside the restrooms will step down the hill, the terraces on the outside will step down the hill, and we'll basically be unviewable, or not completely unviewable, but if you're up on Mockingbird and up above, you'll see right over the roof line of our building. As Rick mentioned, we intend to provide clean and safe restrooms accessible from the outside of the building, as well as a concession stand. So, if you're walking around the lake, if you're biking around the lake, you can come and use the restrooms. You don't have to come in, you don't have to come in, you can use our restrooms. Where else do you use restrooms around the lake? In the port of toilets, I guess, for the most part. As Rick mentioned, we want to nurture the Blackland Prairie. We want to create a nature trail that talks about the Blackland Prairie. We want to teach people who don't know about the Blackland Prairie. We want to create an experience where people who are sailing down at the boat club, or who are walking their dog over at the dog park, can walk over, come to the restaurant, and enjoy it. And as I mentioned, provide a place for community groups to meet, to have their monthly meetings, and enjoy the restaurant as well. Also, as I mentioned, we intend to design the building with sustainability in mind, using sustainable materials, imagery. Think about what the pavilion at Stone Tables looked like. We love the natural stone, we love that look, the low roof line, and we think with the landscaping, the trellises, the outdoor terraces, that within just a very short period of time, the building will look like it was built back in the 30s when Stone Tables was built, and would have always been a part of the lake. Next slide, please. Just a few of the, of the basic components. The building as we're projecting presently is about 8,500 square feet, air-conditioned. That includes dining room, kitchen, inside restrooms, and restrooms accessible from the outside and the concession, as well as the space that we talked about where we could have group meetings. We're proposing about 5,000 square feet of outdoor seating area, which will be terraced down the hill, as I mentioned. Will be pet-friendly, so you can walk over from the dog park and enjoy a meal with your friends, and with your pet. And we want to be sensitive to lighting and noise. You know, I've studied lighting design, there's ways to make lights shine down and not up into the sky and impact the view. Same thing with music and sound. You can use directional speakers at low sound levels that give you music when you're sitting on the terrace, and not broadcast sound out over the lake or up into the neighborhood. And, next slide. With that, that really completes our presentation, and Charles will open it up for questions
Thank you very much. Okay. Okay, now it's time for the question answering. If you would like to come ask a question or have a comment, we will take people, we will alternate from side to side. And I guess we'll start right here with, audience, right, please.
Number one, thank you for taking the time to do the presentation today.
Thank you.
Sure. Thank you for...
Turn it up.
Testing, testing? Testing, testing? 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 Number one, thank you for coming and giving your presentation today. I know you spent a lot of time working on that.
Thank you.
Appreciate, appreciate that very much. I was born and raised in this area, still live in this area, love, love it as much as I ever can, have seen the changes, seen the changes come and go to White Rock Lake, and I've seen a lot of schemes that have wanted to build and do amazing things there. Fortunately, those were not done. What you're considering is taking one of the most beautiful views in Dallas over White Rock Lake and looking into downtown, that is free to all citizens of Dallas. And then you're wanting to charge the citizens of Dallas for that view.
I'm sure, I'll comment on that one. You know, I agree, it's a beautiful view, but I just ask, how many of you have actually ever walked up to that part of Boy Scout Hill? Because that portion of Boy Scout Hill is wild grasses that, you know, really are not being utilized. In terms of the, in terms of, in terms of being able to charge people for the view, what we're going to do is, we're going to provide a facility where people can come in and utilize that, and have a way to be able to access it and to enjoy the view without having to, as all of you have, walked up through the Blackland Prairie itself and through the briars in order to get up to that part of the hill and to be able to enjoy the hillside.
Okay, thank you. Please state your name and give us your question with one minute, please.
My name is Susan Weehy, and this is the second time that I've heard you. Thank you for presenting again. You mentioned about the Dreyfus Club being something that you guys quickly decided would be dangerous because of the increased traffic, but I thought that the point of having food at the lake was for the people that use the lake that would already be there. So what would be the disadvantage of doing a smaller-scale thing like, say, the truckyard that was done on Whole Foods, you know, at like the Dreyfus Club, like doing a smaller thing there if the point is really to give people food?
We have presented a proposal, and our proposal is about, is a building that's about 8,500 square feet. And the reason that we went with the building that's that large is because when we met with people early in this process, one of the comments that we received was, "There are no places for people to go and meet." And they, hey, I'm sorry, but that's a comment. The people, you can go and call the city and see if you can rent out the Winfrey Point or rent out, rent out the Big Thicket Building. Those buildings are being utilized all the time. And so, this was, one of the things that they asked was that people suggested is that we have it large enough and break it up into different rooms so that people can have a room and be able to utilize for meetings and for different events. As far as the food truck thing, you know, a food truck is just a different kind of a, kind of a restaurant, that's all. And the concern is that you still have the trucks that are driving down that road and increasing the traffic in front of the Stone Tables. So I'm not sure how that accomplishes the, what you're trying to, what you're suggesting there.
So the follow-up question for that? Do I get a follow-up question? No? No?
Yes, please. State your name and...
John Fattaruso. I guess the history of Dallas has been, at times, a long and sordid history of developers, commercial developers having politicians in their pocket with campaign donations. The first time I heard of this proposal, I just, it struck me as such an arrogant and egregious breach of the public trust. My, my conclusion was, for it to get to square one, it must have involved some sort of under-the-table money. So my question is, how much money has gone into reelection campaigns of anybody in a position to vote on the city council or the park board?
Well, let me answer that question. First of all, we were way into this process, and for example, David Shin, who's the president of the Peninsula's Homeowners Association, he's here tonight, he was at the meeting. It was at the White Rock Lake Task Force meeting. And we made a presentation to that group, and the next day, there was a blog that was in the paper. And there were comments about Sheffy Cadeen, and, you know, gee, how could Sheffy have let this thing progress this far? Guess what? Sheffy didn't know anything about it. We called him up, we called him up the next day and scheduled a meeting with Sheffy so that he could at least know what was going on with respect to the project. And so, the answer to your question is zero.
Do we need the FBI in here?
You can bring the FBI in all you want, and I stand by my statement that the first time Sheffy heard about this was the day after we made our presentation to the White Rock Lake Task Force.
Okay, okay, next question. Will, next question. Please give your name. The Coram, please, please. Please state your name and question, please.
Hello, I'm Carol Bell Walton from the Save Boy Scout Hill Facebook page. You can all like that page. I do have a question, because at the White Rock Task Force meeting, you had said that you were going to canvas the neighborhoods around where the restaurant would be, and that you would honor the wishes of the neighborhood, that you were going to take the pulse. Flotilla has voted unanimously against the restaurant. The White Rock Task Force has had a straw poll and has voted 12-1-2 against the restaurant. The sentiment at the Old Lake, at the Lake Highlands Neighborhood Association seems to be very much against the restaurant. Are you men of your word? Will you forego the restaurant in the face of this kind of opposition?
We recognize that all, the majority of you here tonight are opposed to the restaurant. But we have a lot of other people that we've talked to who support the restaurant. Well, maybe they didn't feel...
There's, there are people that are...
So there's a few here tonight who support it. So in any situation like this, it's always the vocal minority that shows up? I mean, and you, you know, represent, now, maybe you are the majority.
Let me ask you, let me ask you one question.
I'm not finished with my statement yet.
Okay.
Until we determine that that's the preference of all of the Neighborhood Association and groups around the lake, until we finish meeting with all those groups, we're in the process of, we're not going to give up on our proposal.
Okay.
I would, one, one follow-up question is, if this vocal minority goes to Urban Taco and goes to Hook, Line &amp; Sinker and petitions outside of your existing restaurants, will that get your attention? Ask your partners how you want to proceed.
Thank you. Next question, please.
My name's Will Giddens. I've lived here in Dallas for over 50 years. Person I live with up on Van Dyke's lived here over 50 years. We've had to deal with a lot of noise every Saturday morning, starting at 8:00, from the Merriman Park. That's fine, but you're talking about putting in a restaurant with amplified music that's going to be there every night. You think we want to deal with that and the traffic that's going to bring in? Also, the funding you talk about for the bike area, we've had bond elections here in Dallas for bike trails. There's no bikes on those trails. There's no people walking on those trails. They're all out in the street. And on top of that, they don't obey the traffic laws on those trails, on those streets, anyway. And you talk about Blackland Prairie area, it's already there. We don't need to develop it, have a Blackland area. There's wildlife, there's wildlife, they live there, there's foxes. We go over there quite often. We go there for fireworks shows during the Fourth of July, during the other times of year. And also, you talked about a PD. Have no idea what your PD is. The Dreyfus Club is a good place. I'm sorry, if you're going to serve alcohol, those people are going to have to find a way to drive through there without being intoxicated and trying to come through.
That's cool.
Guys need to pull it together.
We want to offer as many people as we can opportunities. Would you please state your name?
I'm Norma Menison. I too live on Van Dyke, and I was born here in this part of town, lived here my whole life. And au contraire, on your entrance and access, I live on Van Dyke, and we have people all day long with dogs in their cars turning around in our driveways. But my question is about the liquor and the alcohol and the economics of this. How much money are you going to have to make in order to make this a go?
That's a good question, and a fair question. You know, in terms of the projections, and we don't know for sure about that, because we don't know how big it's going to be, we don't, you know, all those kinds of things are still to be determined that's going to come out of this process. But to the extent that, you know, we build it in generally the size that we're talking about, we think that somewhere in the $2.5 million range in terms of aggregate revenue would be the aggregate revenue that we would need in order for the business to be a successful business. And to the extent that we don't generate all that money, and guess what? If we, you know, if we're unsuccessful in our restaurant, then guess what that, guess what happens? That's a terrible thing for Lyle and myself, and for the investors that we go and raise the money for.
Not to picture us.
And I know that none of you give a darn about that. That's our problem.
Oh, we certainly do. You're leaving us with a facility.
No, no, guess what? Guess what? We're going to leave the city of Dallas with a $5 to $7 million building that they can then lease to somebody else, or they can utilize exactly the same way that they utilize Winfrey Point and the other buildings around the lake right now.
I just want to say this. I've done some homework here, and I happen to know how much money in a month that the Katie Ice House has in revenue from sales of liquor, alcohol. And in the month of June last year, almost $650,000 in one month from the Katie Ice House.
Katie, the Katie Trail Ice House is a bar.
The bar, it is a bar.
As opposed to a restaurant.
It is a bar. It is, and that could be what you leave us with, too. The entire county of Dallas, all the Chili's restaurants in the entire county, alcohol, $175,000. So you just need to think about that.
Thank you. Next question, please.
My name is Rita Randall. I've lived in this area for 60-plus years, and I would like to see that vast majority of people that want this. Where are they?
Okay, that was a, that was a semi-straw vote. We won't count the people now. No, hey, hey, you don't get to take up the meeting, I'm sorry. We'll do this later, just relax. Next question, please.
My name is...
I'm conducting the meeting. Could you please sit down? Thank you. Please, sir, ask next question.
My name is George Burke. I'm an elected official, have been for 45 years in Precinct 1052. And I will tell you that this is a disaster waiting to happen. Those of us who have been around for a while will remember they had a strip bar on the other side of the lake on Arthur Drive, and they had to work to get rid of it. They've gotten rid of it. Now, let me tell you, we don't want to have to have the same fight all over again. We've done this once, we don't want to do it again. We've got a beautiful park, anything you put in there, I don't care what it is, if it's not something that's from the city, with the city, and I'm referring to not a commercial enterprise, then we're defeating the purpose of our park.
Thank you. Good statement. Next question, comment, please. Please state your name.
Hi, my name is Terry Wraith, and I'm a native Dallasite. Been going to White Rock Lake my whole life. It's a classic case right now of, you're wanting to pave paradise and put up a parking lot, and when, when you're near a parking lot for over 160 cars, that means that you're projecting over 400 patrons, because, you know, I think it's a two-and-a-half ratio. That is one of the few, few views we've got. We are a geographically challenged city, we always have been. White Rock Lake adds immensely to our life around the lake. To the whole east side of town, it's the cachet. And you're wanting to take the only mountaintop that we've got and take it for your personal use. And I do not know why you think you even deserve to do that, but we do not need it. People can go picnic there right now. They can go any day and visit that spot at the lake, and like they say, it's for free. You're going to need a lot of money to float what you're wanting to do.
Thank you. Yes, sir, state your name and question.
Hi, my name is Ken Zico. I have a couple of questions. One, I want to thank you guys, because you said you have day jobs. You must have an easier job than me to spend this much kind of time talking about something that you were gain nothing personally. One of my questions is, what do you gain from this personally? The other is, what will be done to assess the environmental impact to the lake and the creatures around the lake? We have white pelicans that fly in from god knows where every year. We see them, we take pride in them. What will be done? If there were a federal participation in this, they would need, you would need an environmental impact study. My guess is, you won't need one for this. How can you tell this group that you've assessed the environmental impact of this planned facility?
We'll take our lead from the city of Dallas on that, and we'll work with them to the Park and Rec Department to get whatever environmental impact studies they ask us to. Regarding profits that we're going to make individually, well, we will make some money from this restaurant. How much? I don't know. But, you know, we do, we have other businesses, we do other things. It's, for us, it's the vision of creating a place where all of the citizens of Dallas can come together.
So from, from the lawyer, what about the environmental impact? How would you assess that if your law firm were brought in to assess the environmental impact?
We would engage an environmental company, and they would do a, do a study.
And you haven't yet?
Sitting up on top, we have not yet, no. Sitting up on top of that, that hillside.
Thank you very much. Yes, ma'am. Your turn. Give us your name.
My name is Lyndas Lewis, and I want to know, have y'all walked around White Rock Lake? It took me 10, excuse me, 11 hours, 5 minutes. That was my first go. That was my first go around and it was really nice. How many of y'all are native Texans?
I'm a native Texan.
I know about contracts made by lawyers, they can be broken by anyone. I have had that done. So, I don't think a restaurant there is any good. It puts a black cloud over the area. I think y'all need to get out.
Thank you ma'am.
It's distress on USA and on the state of Texas. Get out.
Thank you, thank you for your comment. Suzanne, can you give us your next question?
Well, I'm sorry, in answer to your question, I'm not a native Texan, but I've been here thirty-four years, so I've been here a long time.
But I am a native Texan. I am a native Texan. Thank you.
Hi.
That's tough act to follow Suzanne.
My name is Suzanne Spann and I'm from some of the Facebook pages also. And I know you talk about, you have a lot of support and we're just a group here that, kind of a vocal, the people that cared enough to come out and, yeah, the vocal minority. But I've walked in Lakewood, I've walked many streets trying to share with neighbors what your plan actually is because somehow it was started off, it started off to be pretty quiet. And I have, someone called me one day and didn't give me his name and he was obviously against it and used some of the same rationale that y'all use. And one of my neighbors actually thought a glass of wine there would be a good time, a good thing. But I've not met anyone else in my neighborhood or Lakewood or Low Forest Hills. So I'm wondering where this support is coming from and if you can give us the neighborhoods that are actually supporting this, the board members that support it.
That's, that's, that's a very good question and you're actually the third neighborhood group that we have talked to. You know, the first one, there were about forty people there, the second one, there were forty or fifty people there. The first one, we didn't take any kind of a poll or anything, the second one, at the end of that, there was a poll and it was about fifty-fifty. There were more that were against, there were in favor. But that's, so that's the answer to your, to your question. We're meeting with the groups and that's what this meeting is all about tonight, to get that input from the various groups.
Well, can you give, you've stated that you're getting about a fifty-fifty reaction in previous interviews and I was wondering which groups have supported you?
What was, what was that neighborhood? Do you have the, do you know the?
Lakewood Trails.
Lakewood Trails Neighborhood Association was the one where we made the presentation and there was, you know, about fifty-fifty, I think it was, I don't know.
Sixteen to fourteen.
Sixteen to fourteen or something.
In your favor?
No.
So, I, you know, I just keep hearing that we're, you know, just a minority and I was hoping that you could name where your majority, the neighborhoods with the majority of support located, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Please sir, state your name and question.
My name is Robert Bunch, I'm retired, I go over to the lake every day, sometimes twice a day, I do photography over there, I shoot wildlife. I have been up on Boy Scout Hill, there's lots of wildlife up there, there's lots of birds up there, there's animals and I'm concerned that, you know, you're destroying some more habitat. But the more important thing is, how can you be so thick-headed as businessmen to alienate and anger so many people? What, what is the point in that? What's that doing you any good? You're arrogant enough to think that you're going to get shoved because you've got powerful friends, that's what, I could see in your eyes, man, you know I'm right. You, you, you're just, it's just arrogant, it's terrible, man, you know, you're, you're upsetting all the people. So what do you say about that? Why are you not a bad guy?
You know, I mean, if, if, if that's your perspective, I'm so sorry because that's not the, that's not the, that's not the person that I am and that's not the way that we're trying.
Drop the plans for the restaurant.
That's not the way that we're trying to approach this. We have met with a lot of different people and we have asked for ideas and thoughts and suggestions and comments back and those are, you know.
Where is all that support? Where is the support? Bring it out, show, where's destroyboyscouthill.org, where is that website? Where is your petition? You need to drop this, bad idea.
Thank you, thank you very much, I appreciate it, thank you. Larry.
My name is Larry Spann and I'm the creator and maintain the Boy Scout, saveboyscouthill.org website. I grew up in Garland, spent a lot of time at White Rock Lake, camped out here as a boy scout on Boy Scout Hill many times. My dad was in the CCC, the very first CCC company here at White Rock Lake. I feel that White Rock Lake is part of my history. But what I'm really concerned about on your presentation, and this has been touched on a couple of times, but you mentioned that you're, you know you're plopping this down in the middle of Blackland Prairie, but you're going to move some Blackland Prairie down the hill. Blackland Prairie is not dark dirt. Blackland Prairie is a very fragile ecosystem and less than one percent of it remains. It's, it's the home for, for hundreds of plant species and dozens of animal species and their habitat is going to be destroyed. So what I'm asking, and someone else mentioned that earlier, but an environmentally, environmental impact study of a protected environment, what do you think that's going to show? It's going to show you're going to impact the environment, I mean.
Comments, thanks?
We're going to, we've worked with and talked to environmentalists and naturalists, we've researched the Blackland Prairies, we've talked to the company, the Native American Seed, who has been instrumental in replanning and working with the Blackland Prairies out at Cedar Park State Park and up in Plano at the park up there. And we feel like that we will be able to add to the success of the Blackland Prairie area there on Boy Scout Hill.
Thank you Larry, we've got to go.
It already exists, so, and it took millions of years for it to be created, so I don't know how you just move it down the hill, but.
Thanks Larry. Please, state your name.
One follow-up comment to that, to that question. We understand in talking to naturalists that it takes approximately three years in order to restore it, so it's not a quick process, it's a difficult thing and it's something that we're committed to doing.
Thank you. Go ahead ma'am.
Hello, I'm Joan Leyden, I'm a healthcare provider and believe me, we eat enough, we're fat enough and we probably have more restaurants per capita in this city than in anywhere in the US. White Rock Lake Park is a pristine open space environment and we have hundreds of miles of places to develop. It is a canvas for anyone who walks across it, bikes, rides a horse, walks, to do as they wish. It's open, you create your happiness. Do we have to substitute a single eating experience for what that would destroy?
I'm astonished that I'm asking a question at all, I just came here to listen. I'm going to call you on an earlier question somebody asked, because she asked you point-blank, if the community is vehemently opposed, will you let this go? And you prevaricated, you wouldn't give an answer. That coupled with the fact that you made a number of statements in your presentation, it's going to be. You're talking like it's a foregone conclusion. So if you're saying that our blessing is important, why are you talking like this is going to happen? Why aren't you saying we would like to? Your language is very, very arrogant and people are responding to that. So, I'm going to ask you more directly, what kind of opposition do you need to get it across your head that we don't want this restaurant? What's it going to take to get our point across? Please don't prevaricate this time.
As we've indicated, we're in the process of going through and meeting with the various groups that make up the White Rock Lake Task Force. There are approximately thirty groups of which the Old Lake Highlands Homeowners Association is one. And so we are meeting with those various groups, we've met with several of them, but essentially the way that it works is, we meet with the president, you know, we talk to Charles. And then we met with the board. And then the board says, come and meet with our whole homeowners association. And so we come and meet with the whole homeowners association. Somebody made the comment, how's our day job working? Well, it takes time in order to schedule all those things and to get that done. And so there's a process that we're going through. Over the next three weeks, we have three or four more meetings that are scheduled with homeowners associations, with one of the sailing clubs. We haven't yet met with the Conservancy, we haven't yet met with the Love of the Lake people. And there are a number of other organizations, there are a number of other organizations that make up the White Rock Lake Task Force that we haven't had an opportunity to meet with. And so that's what we're going to do, we're going to meet with those groups, we'll make a presentation to the task force and then we'll see where we are at that point in time.
I'll just say that I think the language of your presentation was offensive enough to where you made the opposition even more vehement. Because you're talking like it's a foregone conclusion that's going to happen and you don't even have your day to get by your own admission. I would urge you to change your language and to be more open-minded instead of accusing us of being closed-minded, thank you.
Thank you. Please state your name and ask your question.
Hello, my name is Elaine and I live in the Peninsula neighborhood, so, but Boy Scout Hill is kind of my backyard. I walk or ride my bike by Boy Scout Hill nearly every day. And I just wondered why you're opposed to, instead of building a restaurant with music and congestion and cars, what's wrong with just packing up a picnic basket, putting down a blanket and listening to birds and the sails and children and dogs and nature at the state park?
That's a wonderful thing and I have done that myself.
Do you enjoy it?
And I enjoyed it immensely, it was wonderful. This is just another opportunity to have that same experience and have a, have the view of us.
It's a little different without listening to birds and nature sounds, having this music drowning out the lake. Changing the complete ambiance of what you're looking at.
Thank you. Yes sir, please state your name and ask a question.
Yes, my name is Michael Wolfeld and I live in Lake Park Estates. I appreciate you guys coming out and I appreciate the dialogue, I've tried to have a commercial business in Dallas, I know how difficult it is. My connect, my connection here to this whole area is that I raise honeybees and I've lived near the lake for twenty-five years. This particular area is close to several of my apries. For over twenty-five years, I have seeded that area with wildflowers for my bees because of, I had a lot of problems with habitat destruction. And so I have a personal connection to this site, it's where most of my bees forage and I sell the honey to people in the neighborhood to help with their allergies, so. I'm one of the persons that'll be directly affected by the site.
Thank you. Thank you for your comment.
All right, we'll see how far I can get before I get vegetables thrown at me or I get stoned.
It's okay, please.
Or without getting interrupted, do you think that you could handle that?
Well, we'll try.
I am really, really disappointed at this group and the way that they, the way that they have handled this, I mean, calling you guys arrogant, I think, is really, really immature and the way that, really, you, I mean, this is ridiculous. Anyway, so I was curious if this building was going to be LEED certified?
Yes, it would be.
It will be LEED certified, so under the LEED certification system, and would you be seeking platinum or silver, gold?
Gold, probably.
Gold, okay, so under that system, there are certain things that you have to make sure that you do in order to make sure that you receive your certification, correct? So you would have to make sure, I mean, in order to get certified, you would have to make sure that you did restore the Blackland Prairies, that you did replace the trees, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so, so that's a way to hold you accountable to that, correct?
Yes, it is.
So for those that have questions about your ability to actually implement that and to be held accountable, those are some of those ways that you could actually be environmentally friendly, correct? I'm the vice president of Casobiu Haven, so I'm ten minutes, maybe five minutes away from the lake. So, I do live here, thank you, I do use the lake just as much as you do, okay? And personally, I'm sorry, I'm not a hiker and a biker if you can't tell, it's not really my thing, but I would love to go sip a margarita by the lake, I would love to. So, who knows you? What is the, I don't understand. Woman, you are hissing at people, you are ridiculous. This woman is hissing at you like she's some kind of a snake. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. Your name and?
Yes, my name is Jean Perry and I have lived in East Dallas and Lake Park Estates and now in an apartment, the old, old, old Oaks White Rock Apartments for thirty years. I didn't grow up here. I want to thank you both for giving us an opportunity to have a say in this. But there are people who also utilize the lake, who don't have a say, who you have not canvassed, who cannot afford a thirty-dollar dinner and a seven-dollar margarita, you know? I respect what you do. I grew up in Highland Park, my brother is a huge investment realtor and I don't know about lawyers, but, you know, I honor what you do, go make the money, you've got the wherewithal to do it, but don't do it here. On Easter Sunday, there were more than seven hundred vehicles and more than two thousand people, mostly minorities and of multicultural minorities, who picnicked, grilled, had piñatas, threw Easter eggs, played volleyball, did soccer on the lake. And yeah, they dumped a lot of trash. But guess what? The city came through and picked it up and every one of me and my neighbors who went out walking that day picked up bags of trash. Because we who live here care about it. But this lake is not for those who live here. I got my bracelet from a woman who went and met with city council two weeks ago and she was poo-pooed and they said, oh, you just say all you rich people own the lake. Not true.
Thank you, we've got time for four more questions, four more, number one, go ahead.
My name is Carol Kaminish, I was not, I was not born and raised in Dallas, but I live in Eastwood today and I got here as fast as I could, as they say. A couple of things I want the crowd to be aware of is LEED certification is voluntary, so no matter what level, they tell you they can accommodate, they can back away from it at any time and build whatever they want. The two and a half acres that you want to take over for this project, to me, it's not just about the two and a half acres, it's about any other developer that comes along after that gate is open. We, we could potentially have a ring of commercial development once it starts and I moved here for the recreation of White Rock Lake area and I don't think it's good stewardship to take parkland for commercial development and I think this is just the beginning. take parkland for commercial development, and I think this is just the beginning. You put several pictures up earlier of restaurants on lakes in parkland. You can put up 1,000 examples, it doesn't matter. The people who live around White Rock Lake don't want it here, and it's my opinion, it's my opinion, you can talk all you want about preserving Blackland Prairie and being a steward of the lake or the environment, I think the only thing you wanna be a steward of is your own pocketbooks.
Thank you.
Can I comment on that?
Yeah, I, I...
I'll, I'll comment on, on that one, and you make some, you make some very good points there, but in terms of, you know, developers coming in and, you know, sort of overtaking the lake, do you think that people really wanna come and do what Lyle and I are doing, standing up here tonight?
Absolutely. 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 You're setting a precedent. You're setting a precedent here. If we allow this to happen, it's a precedent, and we're gonna open the floodgates. I, I was gonna say other things, but people have said it. I would like to know, I'd like to make a proposal, Richard. If you could get together with, get the list of names of the organizations that they wanna talk to, find out who all these organizations are, maybe some way, do a representative sampling from each of the neighborhood associations, and let's do it all at one time, and let's just find out how many people are absolutely in favor of this and how many people are not, and do it all at once. And we don't need to list, we don't need to read about it in the newspaper, we can do it in one evening at some large hall, or however you can plan it, and let's get it all done at one time. You talk about, you talk about not taking anything away from the park. You say you wanna give us something. You're not giving us anything. The bottom line is, you are taking things away, and it means different things to different people. It's me and my grandson who fly kites at Boy Scout Hill. It's many different things. So if you think that opening a restaurant, which, which produces garbage, is going to be a benefit to us and overcome all of the things that we're going to lose, you're wrong. You're wrong. You're wrong. Leave it alone. Thank you. Thank you, Dan. Please state your name and question.
Good evening, Megan McGowan, Monopoly Place Duplexes. And my point has already been made several times by several previous speakers, but I'd like to point out that my husband, Jerry, and I have lived in the Monopoly Place area for, since 1993, so about 21 years now. Moved here from Garland for the specific purpose of coming to the White Rock Lake area and being close to White Rock. We are both avid cyclists. He enjoys building and flying model airplanes, and I am a trained Skywarn spotter for the city of Dallas, Dallas County. The Boy Scout, Boy Scout Hill area is a prime storm spotting location, and the services that we provide as volunteers with Skywarn and with the Radio Amateur Civil Emergency Service, provide a valuable service to help save lives. And by destroying the, the Boy Scout Hill area with your restaurant, you're eliminating a very prime and very important venue for us to be able to get a good look at what's coming in to protect people within this county. Thank you.
Okay, this is gonna be our last question for the night.
Can I, can I follow up?
No, I'm sorry. Please, sorry.
I'm not sure I understand why you're, we're taking away your ability to spot the storms.
I, all right, well, you know, I, it's not a matter of, you know, taking it away completely, but what we have here is a prime location, a very good visible, visibility location that affords us excellent viewing access. It's high up. It provides viewing from the locations where storms tend to migrate, from the northwest, directly west, to the southwest. There are very few locations in this part of the city of Dallas that provide a good, unobstructed view. The, the better view that we have, the farther out that we can see a severe situation coming in, the more we can act, you know, relay that information to the National Weather Service, who can then in turn provide timely watches and warnings to save lives. That's the point. Visibility.
Last question.
Hi, I, I just had sort of two points to address. One to the lady that wanted the margarita. I enjoy a drink where whiskey palin's as much as the next person, but that's why we have the Dallas Arboretum. There's plenty of places to view the lake and eat and drink there. Oh, and my name is Laura Murkison. My husband comes from Highland Park, and we're no strangers. Our family to development. I've been privileged to travel all over the world, and to try to compare some of these other places to, to Boy Scout Hill is, I, I don't have a word, but I will say this, there was a restaurant on a lake in Dallas, and it went bust. It was called Pierre's on Botman Lake. Does anybody remember it? And it had fine dining, and it had alcohol, and you know what it does? It sits there, and it's just an eyesore. The development Garland Road is abysmal. That Lake Highlands needs all kinds of renovations. Sir, you live there, you should know. I, I mean, it, it should not be done on what open Greenland Park space and the remnant of Blackland Prairie that we have left.
We've got a special guest here this evening, Sheffy Cadain, our councilman from, from council number nine. Sheffy, could you come up and, yeah, I think you're where the rubber's gonna meet the road on this thing. If you could help outline for us maybe where the city stands on this, where they, where they know, or what's, what's going on with, as far as your viewpoint, we sure would appreciate it, because I think the final end will go with you.
Well, thank y'all for letting me speak. I heard, I heard, hey, you like my shirt? Hey, guys. Listen, I've, I've followed this, and I think the first gentleman that spoke said that I knew all about this event going on. I didn't know about it until after I talked to Mr. Charles, Charles Wicker with Old Lake Highlands. Where, where's Charles? Sorry, I hadn't met Charles yet, but did, remember, we talked? You'd called me, and that's when I got busy. And I think that, y'all had already had a meeting or so, I believe, about this.
We met with the task force, and then that was when Charles...
And I, I hadn't heard anything on it. Then I did talk with you guys, I think, at some point. I, I, well, wait a minute. I informed them. I said, "You go get the neighborhoods around you to approve this restaurant, and then you come talk to me." Let me tell you, they've done exactly what they said. They have not come to anybody with this project down to City Hall, and the people they gotta go to is gonna be the Park Department.
Where's stewardship for our open space is not above age, and so, hey, turn over to the highest bidder. You want to take the vote?
What?
Actually, you don't have to vote to protect our open space.
Well, you, you, you're sitting there saying, "I'm not." You're saying, "I'm not going to." Wait a minute, you're sitting there saying that we're not, and that's not true.
We weren't approving it all. Nobody came to certify my house.
No, okay, let me, let me just say, this, wait a minute, let me just say, this has got to go through, it's gotta go through the Park Department. They'll speak on it.
Vote!
Wait a minute. You wanna listen? Once it comes to the city council, I will be not approving this restaurant, and I've got people on my council. I, I've got too many constituents and neighborhoods that are totally against this, and Lyle and them know, there's no way I can approve a restaurant at White Rock Lake. So that's where I'm at, just want you to know.
All right.
Excuse us, we're gonna have a final statement. Hang on one second. Thank you.
You're not gonna approve the zoning, you're not gonna approve the...
Okay, please, please, we're not done. Please. What? Thank you.
I wanna thank all of you for being here tonight. I appreciate the comments. You know, I apologize if we've appeared to be arrogant up here, because that's not how we've approached this. I wanna thank Sheffy for his comments coming up tonight and confirming what we said earlier concerning when we talked to him about this and the, you know, our discussions with the city, because that's exactly the truth, and we haven't lied to you about anything. We haven't lied to anybody. Like the rest of you, we love White Rock Lake. We're trying to provide an amenity to the lake. We think that it would be a great thing. Obviously, there are a lot of people that don't, and so we appreciate your thoughts and your comments on that. All the people that are standing in line right now, thank you for getting up and having, you know, something to say. Paul, I'm sorry that you're not gonna have the opportunity to do that, because, you know, but thank you very much for being here.
Thank you for coming, and have a safe trip home, and we appreciate your comments. Have a nice night.
Bill Blades. Okay. Citizens, citizens. Oh, we have an impromptu speaker here, Bill Blades, former councilman, is gonna give a short address.
Ladies and gentlemen, can I have your attention just one minute? Your, your ideas tonight were well spoken. I can't say a whole lot for your manners, but I've been involved with people like this as an ex-city councilman from District 10, just a year north. I wanna tell you that if you're going to fight this, you have three different routes. It cannot be approved till it goes through the Park Board. You have a member of the Park Board from District 9. Find out who they are and make sure that your opinions are given to them, because they have to convince the rest of the Park Board that this is a good idea. Number two, in order to get the zoning that is needed to do this project, they are asking for a planned development, that's what PD stands for, planned development. That planned development has to go through a public hearing. That public hearing is held before the city plan commission. You will have three minutes per person to talk, or up to 30 minutes per side, to make your opinions known. Find out who your District 9 Plan Commissioner is, and make sure that that individual understands exactly how you feel and why. Be succinct. Don't make it a guess, or a "I think," or you speak from fact. I heard a few facts tonight that came out in the conversation. Most of it was public, was individual opinion. Opinion doesn't go a lot if you don't have the facts to back it up. Then, no matter whether it's passed at the Plan Commission or not, if it's not, the developer has the right to ask to go straight on to the council, which many of them do, because the council is the final say. You just heard how your councilman's gonna vote. Those are, that is also public hearings. If you've never been to the horseshoe, it's a rare experience. Sitting behind it is even more rare. But those are the three main things that you can do, because your councilman has already said he will not vote for this project. Make sure your Plan Commissioner doesn't and speaks against it. Make sure your Park Board representative does exactly the same thing, because without their help, then it is wide open. I'd like to know how many members, or if there are any Park Board member here tonight, if there has been any member of any other organization other than, that had been mentioned tonight, like Love of the Lake? Have any, are there members of that organization here?
100% oppose all board members of Project Go-Head.
Well, that'll save, that will save them one meeting. Just as you walk out of here tonight, make sure that you've got your neighbor by your side, but make sure you make contact with that Park Board member and the Plan Commission, and send your letters, because each one of you who live within a 500-foot radius of that place will get a questionnaire as to whether or not you do or do not support it. That'll come from the city of Dallas. Make sure you fill it out and send it back. They have those. I'm told that Linda Tarpley is your Plan Commission member for District 9. Gloria Tarpley. Gloria Tarpley is your Plan Commissioner.
Okay. Give me have your, uh...
Thank you all.
Yes, we've got a sign-up sheet out there with the, the numbers and the emails of the city council, our parks person, Jerry Worrell, and our Gloria Tarpley, our planning person. By all means, we will post that on our website, we'll have total access. We'll send it to you on the email if you did the sign-up sheet.